On the enterprise funds. So tonight, we have, relatively speaking, compared to the Marathon Finance public hearings last Monday and Tuesday, we have relatively a few articles. So you will remember that the purpose of the public hearing is to get a chance to preview what the motions are that are going to come before the town in April, and to give us a chance as citizens to participate by helping the presenters improve their presentation. So any kind of contribution or question you might have that would help the presenter understand the feelings of the citizens so that the motion could be, or the presentation could be more effective at town meeting would be helpful. If you want to raise a question, first thing after the presentation, I'll turn to my colleagues on the select board to see if they have questions, and then entertain questions from the audience. Please, as you'll know, there's a microphone in the middle of the room. Please step to it, tell us your name and your address, and then your question. So the first article tonight that we're going to deal with is Article Number 20. Ray?
Okay. Members of the Select Board. I'm Ray Andrews, 11 Dalton Road. I'm going to assume you haven't read the handout materials, but you're looking forward to the opportunity later tonight. And so they're behind the back table back there. Let's see. Oh, yeah, okay. So we are all citizens of the town of Concord, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the Republic of the United States of America. This is important to remember as we discuss Article 20. A republic is defined as, quote, "a state in which supreme power rests in the body of citizens entitled to vote and is exercised by representatives chosen directly or indirectly by them," end quote. The petitioners have brought this article to you because we believe that the concentrated influence of a small number of entities on the workings of our government is not in our own best interest or the best interest of the citizens of Massachusetts or the United States, and it doesn't reflect the ideals of our republic. Do you feel as a U.S. citizen and voter that you share supreme power with your fellow Do you think that our current state and federal government are primarily focused on the common good? Or do you, like me, think that somewhere or somehow larger and wealthier entities are getting a better deal than we common citizens and voters? Ever wonder why? Approximately $7 billion, that's where the B dollars are spent on the 2015-2016 election This chart shows where over $4 billion of that came from. That'll be on the quiz, so all those details are going to be on the quiz later tonight. Article 20 could be a first step in addressing our situat-- oh, that's right, you can't see. Okay, okay. Article 20 could be a first step in addressing our situation, a first step in taking back our power as envisioned in the Constitution. Article 20 is asking our representatives, our elected representatives, to recognize that they work for the citizen voters. Their primary goal should be to make laws that are for the good of the country and its citizens, and not for the disproportionate benefit of the big-money entities that currently contribute megabucks to the campaigns of these representatives. Their goal should be to work for the good of the citizens they represent, and Massachusetts, and the country as a whole. Their goal should not be to serve the narrow desires of the companies, rich entities, or wealthy individuals who fund their campaigns, or the companies who have offered to hire them as lobbyists when they leave office. This article asks our representatives to pass tough new anti-corruption laws, yeah, new anti-corruption laws, that would accomplish such things as increased transparency of campaign funding, prohibit politicians from taking campaign money from industries they regulate, regulate PACs, super PACs, set up a publicly-funded campaign finance system, strengthen enforcement of government agencies and ethics committees of rules against politicians and special interests that break campaign finance laws, prevent elected representatives and some senior staff from negotiating jobs while in office, and bar elected representatives and some senior staff from all lobbying activity for some period of time after leaving office. Half a dozen towns in Massachusetts are considering resolutions like this at their town meetings this year. Citizens in a number of cities, counties, and one state have passed resolutions, or ballot initiatives, or laws addressing some of the objectives listed above. This problem has developed over many years, and was accelerated in 2010 by the Citizens United decision of the U.S. Supreme Court. Many of you may remember that in 2012, at town meeting, the town meeting passed a resolution calling upon Congress to pass and send to the states a constitutional amendment declaring that corporations are not persons. It will take hard work and many steps over some years to fix this problem. This non-binding resolution is just the first step, not unlike those few shots fired across the river near the bridge just downstream and northwest of here. If passed, this resolution will be sent to our elected representatives to encourage them to file and seek passage of legislation that will reduce these types of systemic corruption. I urge you to vote yes on warrant Article 20. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Questions?
First, we'll take questions from the Select Board. Tom?
Do you have any estimate as to what publicly-funded elections would cost?
I'm sorry, what?
The cost of publicly-funded elections, if you're going to have it publicly-funded, it has to come from taxpayers, I assume. What is the estimation of the cost?
It's been creeping up over the last, and it was creeping up in relatively space there. Speak here? Okay. Yeah, it has been creeping up. I've got a graph probably in that binder somewhere, but it's been creeping up, and it didn't really jump when Citizens United took place. But it was like, I think in 2002, it was like $3 billion. So how much would it cost? Well, hopefully, it would cost less, and not just because it would save money, but because it would be, we wouldn't be, hopefully, we wouldn't be subjected to the intense, long, long, long duration, so many negative ads, if people had less money to spend.
Isn't it fair to say there's no way to know the cost? You're going to be funding, the last election, you had, what, 19 Republicans running the presidential. You're going to fund all 19, and if 50 people run, you're going to fund all of those? That's one of the problems I see in the publicly-funded aspect of it, in setting limitations on it.
Right.
And while I agree with all of your aspirations on this, I'm not sure whether all of your solutions are necessarily going to sort of pass muster.
Right. I think, I know that the League of Women Voters of the United States, I believe, the whole League of Women Voters, identified a publicly-funded campaign finance system as being a broad-based solution to a lot of the problems here. It doesn't deal with lobbyists, but it certainly deals with a lot of the control, the accountability, and the fact that legislators have to spend roughly half of their time fundraising, which is, you know, you've got a tough job to do in the first place, staying in touch with your constituents and reading the bills, and if you have to spend half of your day fundraising.
But until you overturn Citizens United, none of this would pass First Amendment muster?
I, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not even an expert. I'm becoming, you know, more informed all the time, but a long way before that would be true. But I don't think, I think all these things could take place, all the things we've suggested here could happen before, would not be unconstitutional with Citizens United in place.
Have you had that checked?
I personally haven't, but I think the organization has.
Thank you.
You mentioned that other towns in the Commonwealth are, is this modeled on other towns' articles? What other town, I'm curious as to where this is.
Yeah, other towns, this is being brought to the Lexington Select Board. I went to a meeting there with the resident who was bringing it to the board, and he's, it's a representative town meeting as opposed to an open town or direct town meeting, so he's been working with them. And the resolution is very, very similar. I mean, it's, I think, change the word Concord to Lexington, and you're pretty much there. And the same is happening in Acton. They're having a meeting tonight, a Select Board meeting tonight, in which one of the people I've been working with is bringing the same resolution there. Stonem, North Hampton, North Andover, Andover are towns that I know of where it's on the town meeting agenda.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I think I heard you say that in answer to my colleague's question about whether the First Amendment rights had been already reviewed by some legal person, and you mentioned that you haven't particularly, but the organization has. What organization is that?
Yes. I've gotten involved with an organization called Represent Us, which is volunteers, actually they have an office in Western Mass, in Florence, Massachusetts. And in fact, yeah, this, Represent Us, represent.us is their website. And they have chapters all over the country, actually, all over the country. They have chapters in many places in the country, in the Midwest, in Oregon, Florida, San Francisco, California, several cities in California, and they've gotten bylaws or somewhere between resolutions and laws. They've got, some places have gotten laws passed, other places have gotten resolutions like this, sort of a non-binding resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Through ballot initiative, for the most part.
Other questions? I would just suggest, not a question, but it suggests that when you start your presentation, you put your motion on a slide.
Oh, right, okay, sure.
And then, when it's ended, to get it back up there again so that when people are talking, that they're looking at the motion.
It's a little dense. It's only a page, but it's still a little dense, but, okay.
Dense, we can handle. Most of us are, anyway. Questions from the audience?
Susan from Fiveingham Lane in Concord, and, oh, I'm Susan. I just want to say thank you to Ray for bringing this up. I happen to work at American Promise that's working on the same, that same thing that Represent Us is doing. And I know that Ray said there's one other state that has passed amendments like that. There's actually 18 other states that have. This movement is growing so fast that it's a citizens uprising, that we are getting people that really believe that concentrated money in government is out of control, and that we need to bring our government back to a democracy, rather than what some people are calling an oligopoly. So the answer to Tom's question that American Promise would say is that all we want to do is set limits. We're not saying that there can't be funding, but there just can't be $10 billion over here, and then the $5 of each person, but corporations, the limits would just be set so it's not going to be, at least in our opinion, funded by the government. So that's the, that's a lot, a lot of the resolutions say that. So, and we also work with Represent Us, that Ray, we just met with them, and they're doing the same thing, and we also have places across the country, so.
Thank you.
I support everything that he says.
Thank you.
Speaking to Tom's question, I think that there was a study done that said that 96% of Americans feel that money in politics is a problem, and 91% of the same group feel nothing we can do about it. So we're working there.
Good evening. Ned Perry, 362 Bedford Street. In the spirit of transparency and accountability, your handout doesn't have a name and address as to who is handing it out, which is one of the rules and regulations of our town meeting that you put that on. The moderator will be reviewing all handouts, so if you were to hand this out or propose to hand it out, I believe she would advise you accordingly. More importantly, our town meeting is supposed to be hearing from people in Concord rather than people in Lexington, and I would
Right.
cogently advise you that people from Lexington might not be listened to as well as having your name on it, so I'm sure
Right, yeah, I'm not doing
I'm sure the handout will be better at town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Dan is doing it in Lexington, and a guy named Chris is doing it in Acton, their residents there. And you said, what about the, I didn't, I'll speak to you later about the name of people who signed the petition, is that what you're saying?
No, not, excuse me, not the names of the people signing the petition. It's just on the bottom of your handout, or at the end of the handout, should have your name and address on it.
Oh, okay, okay.
If you look on our town website, under Town Meeting Rules and Regulations,
Okay.
you will see what needs to go on the handouts.
Okay, good idea, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions?
There are.
Jonathan Kies, 91 Liberty Street. Just curious, the people you've worked with, like these politicians, do they support this whole idea? I'm a little skeptical about politicians wanting to really, really get behind this thing.
Yes, I talked to Corey Atkins before I even got started on this, and she did express concern. She said the part about lobbyists, she said, first of all, Massachusetts is just clean and green, and it's just the federal government, you should refine this, confine this to the federal government. And I do have information in my magic binder there about Massachusetts, which is, in terms of campaign finance, Massachusetts is the number-one state in the country, and in terms of availability of public records, we're down number 40-something. So Massachusetts and accountability of other areas, we're not as clean as we would like to be or could be. And she also expressed concern about people in the senior staff negotiating jobs when they, you know, when their job at the representative's office ends. And I think, I think that the whole business is about transferring from working for the government to working as a lobbyist, or as in the private side, dealing with government relations, is, it's not inherently a conflict of interest. It has the great potential for being a conflict of interest, but it's not, you know, categorically the problem. So, has that addressed your question? Sort of?
Skepticism.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah. Well, I do want to hear more about the skepticism, because this is just practice for town meeting.
Other question? Seeing none, thank you very much, Ray.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it. The next article is Article 28, Guideline for Preservation of Public Access to Open Space. Mr. Green, please.
This article has very, very, very limited intent and objectives. But it's important, the sponsors believe, to give town meeting an opportunity to formally express its opinion on a core value that is currently either only implicit or contained in plans such as the Concord Long Range Plan that many citizens are not familiar with. It is entirely consistent, we believe, with current town policy and practices, and with the Concord Land Range Plan, and documents, and the actions of our boards, our current board, our committees, our town manager, and our staff. We believe there should be no controversy at all about this article, as it is now revised and limited only to public lands, and is only a suggestion that public access be considered as one leading priority when a policy is considered that could affect public access to lands. We believe it's supportive of everything the town is currently doing and its policies. It's a non-binding resolution. It encourages explicit consideration, consideration of public access to open spaces. It established it as one priority, along with public safety and all the other interests of the town. It doesn't override any other consideration of the town. And it is designed to be in people's minds from the large-scale planning decisions the town has to make, down to the most daily mundane operations, such as plowing the roads and parking areas so that public access is maintained. It has absolutely zero effect on private property rights. It respects them explicitly, and does not attempt to make any changes or have any effect on private property rights, which it respects. It does not cost anything, does not change any existing agreements or decisions. It does not direct itself to any particular project, parcel, or piece of land. This is not about Esterbrook Woods or any other particular issue. For example, it might come into play if the town decides to purchase open space alone or in collaboration with the land trust or some other organization, and the town has to decide, one, whether it will do it, and, two, suppose the town has operations on that land, such as a well site or a future water treatment facility. It has to think about public access to the open space, but it doesn't have to mandate public access. Daily operations of the town, policing, to make sure that the public access is not only available, but that it doesn't infringe on abutters and private property landowners, signage to protect public access in a way so that it doesn't create problems for the neighborhood and the abutters. So why do we need this, given how limited it is? Why do we need this at all? That's a good question, given how limited it is. In all honesty, we don't need it the way we need a budget at town meeting. We don't need it the way we might need a change in a zoning ordinance or bylaw. We don't need it to prevent small children from dying. We don't need it to keep any trail open, okay? We don't need it in that sense of the way. But we believe that there is a virtue in enshrining this core community value through a vote of town meeting, which is a different way of expressing the town's values than a long-range plan, or even the very well-done policies and procedures of our committees, boards, and staff of the town. Besides, who knows who will be sitting in your chairs tomorrow or 10 years from now? If the present board decided they would continue in office for the next 20 years, we might not need this at all. But we know from current affairs that there can be a sudden change in leadership positions. And if you saw the newspaper this past week, at the federal level, we see that a change in who is in the government might have an effect on our open space, our public lands, our national parks, our national lands. And what has been implicit as a policy, or even explicit in an executive order, can be undone by individuals. And so the proponents of this ordinance ask that the town have an opportunity to express what we believe is a core value, and is now a very carefully drafted article, so as not to create any anxiety on the part of private property owners or town officials. And we urge the town to pass this article.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Eric, thank you. I know you adopted or made adjustments to your earlier proposal, and I think that those have been, you know, right on point, that some of the earlier language is much harsher and restrictive. I guess, I guess my only question is if this was not motivated by Esterbrook Woods' resolution, and would not have had any impact on the result of that decision.
I don't think it would have been, because I think the task force did a wonderful job on Esterbrook, and it did consider public access, and it did preserve public access. Now, it recommended some changes there in order to address serious problems that the abutters at the end of Esterbrook Road were confronting, all very positive. And there were some disagreements about whether there should be 11 parking spaces or 13 parking spaces. Please. The boards made their decision in good faith, that's behind us, nobody's questioning that. It wouldn't have changed that, I believe, wouldn't have mandated any change, and it's not about that. Let's move on. I think that discussion stimulated people's interest in the issue, which was a positive.
Thank you. I just think that's important to have gotten out,
Yeah.
because I think that the timing of this
Yes.
could lend itself to a misinterpretation.
It could. Obviously, it was, it stimulated the sponsors to think about this. But this is not designed to criticize or to reopen that decision. Let's move on together on this.
Thank you.
I know that the, the changes, can you explain how, from a process, a town meeting process, the new language is going to be introduced alongside, because the article, obviously, is already, is already
This is the language that will be moved.
Right.
And we've been informed by the assistant town moderator, who will preside over this article, because the moderator will recuse herself on this article. We've been informed that these revisions are consistent with the article, and therefore they can be revised. So the moving party will move it in the form we see up there now. Is that the answer to your question?
So in other words, the changes will be the actual article at town?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And, and, and any other improvements to it that people might suggest? People have a very open mind. This is an article that the movements really would like be in a position so that it could receive unanimous approval at town meeting. We don't want anybody to feel that it has any negative implications for anybody, especially, especially the private property owners who, over the years, have graciously opened up their private lands to allow access. We don't want this to be in any way threatening to that.
I have a question. In your argument, I heard that this would help correct or balance against future years members of this committee, this board, or others, but I'm wondering how a non-binding resolution does that?
So that's a good question. The proponents of this article thought that the specific circumstances in which thinking about public access to open space could arise are too myriad and unpredictable to make this mandatory in any way, and were completely satisfied that if it was just suggestive to consider it, the quality of our boards and personnel in the town was great enough that that's all you had to do. If, if town meeting said as a group, "Consider it," they will. They will. It's, I think there's some similarity to a resolution that town meeting passed a few years ago. I think there's some similarity to a resolution that town meeting passed a few years ago. I think maybe requiring that the town consider affordable housing or other things. But we didn't feel that we had to require it. We thought encouraging consideration would be enough in this town because public access to open space is such a shared common value in Concord. It's one of the reasons we live here.
Are there just no questions from the board? Questions from the public? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Next article is Article 31, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail easement to the MBTA. Mr. Whalen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Whalen, Town Manager. I live at 1935 Main Street, and I'll be discussing the next four articles with you. Article 31 concerns the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail and the need to grant an easement on town land to the MBTA. The text of the article is shown there. You see in the MBTA parking lot in West Concord is highlighted there. The Club Car Cafe is adjacent to the Woods Hill Table Restaurant, and that's the area that we're interested in. The town owns about half of the MBTA commuter parking lot. The MBTA owns the other portion, where the arrows are pointing, where some town-owned land would like to be utilized by the MBTA in exchange for access that they've granted to the town for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail across their property. So down below here, you see the Club Car Cafe building at the bottom and the commuter parking lot at the top. The Bruce Freeman Rail Trail will be cutting through behind or between Woods Hill Table and the Club Car Cafe and consuming those six spaces on MBTA land that you see shown there. So the T has agreed to accept parking for its maintenance staff, and they have a small maintenance group that works out of the back of the Club Car Cafe. You may have seen there, there's MBTA trucks that are there. So rather than park where you see them there, they'll be parking across there. And that was an elegant solution, actually, to how to get the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail across an active rail line. There aren't many places in Massachusetts where that happens. They didn't want to allow direct access right across. They want to direct cyclists into a corral area so when the gates come down for the trains on Commonwealth Avenue, gates will come down for the corral where cyclists will gather as well. And they wanted to do that west of the Club Car Cafe and then bring people back to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail to the right of the Club Car. So that was the solution that we came up with. The business owners worked well with the T and with the town, and so that's the current plan. And as you may know, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail is scheduled to be, construction is scheduled to begin in the month of April, so it's going to be underway pretty soon. And then back to the warrant article. So it's a rather simple exchange of six spaces on MBTA land for six spaces on Town of Concord land.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Mr. Whalen, move on to Article 32.
Article 32 concerns the Brookside Square development in West Concord and the easements associated with that. As you can tell from the text of the warrant article, there are three easements that we would like the town to authorize the select board to accept. Brookside Village is located here in West Concord. Commonwealth Ave. is here, and we were just talking about the commuter parking lot, which is nearby. Beharold Street, you might recall, went into, off Commonwealth Avenue, dead-ended back there in the industrial area. When Brookside development was proposed, the planning staff and others in town thought it would be beneficial to have a circular loop through that area to make it easier for fire engines, police vehicles, and the general public to circulate. So part, one of the conditions of the development approval was to provide an easement to the town to make that loop. There was also an easement to connect that area to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, which will be coming down through this way here. So there's an aerial view of it. You see Neshoba Brook, Brookside Village, Beharold Street now loops through. At 50, 70, and 80, Beharold Street, it's a 72-unit development of rental housing, fully occupied. It was approved by the Board of Appeals in 2013, constructed in 2014, and the occupancy permits were issued in 2015. The requirements for approval of that project by the Board of Appeals was that the developer would pay $50,000 to construct the connection between the MBTA commuter parking lot and Commonwealth Avenue, that they'd grant an easement to the town over that Beharold Street extension, providing perpetual public access via foot, bicycle, or motor vehicle. A grant of easement for recreational walking on the north side. So let me back up and show you where that is. That's on the, is an easement on, oops, an easement behind or on the north side back here. The footpath that's back there will connect with the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. No vehicles, but it is a recreational passage. And the grant of easement for recreational walking on the north side, and then sewer and stormwater drainage easements were included as well. So Article 32 requests that the select board be authorized to accept these easements from Brookside Village. They've already been drawn up, negotiated with the lawyers. The town council has reviewed them. That Beharold Street extension right-of-way, public access to the recreational easement, which goes through the center of the building. There's an open portion of the building, so you can pass from the north or Brookside through the building and onto Beharold Street. So it's a convenient location where they hope to have some, it could be a venue for some outdoor activities, plays, concerts, that sort of thing. They want to encourage the public to come into that location. And then three is the roadway and sidewalk easement on the West Concord Post Office property. So those are the three easements. This is the view of the property. You can kind of see through to the backside there, how the public will be able to walk through that property. And the residences are up on the second and third floor. Commercial activity is on the first floor, the ground floor. That's another view. And that's the north side of the Brooks. The Brook is to the left, and that's the recreational path that will lead to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail you see in the distance. And that's Article 32.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Questions from the audience?
Article 33 involves a grant of easement to WR Grace across the property that the town acquired from that company. This is a familiar map to you perhaps. The former Grace site is located right along the town, corporate boundary between the town of Acton on the left-hand side and the town of Concord. You see Route 62 and the Valley Sports Center skating rinks. Knox Trail is that area in red at the bottom. It's about 79 acres of land that we acquired by eminent domain. Town meeting authorized the select board to acquire the property by eminent domain, and we did. History of the site, it's a superfund site, and so the contamination was detected in Acton's water supply wells in the late '70s. Consent decree was entered into with Grace, was added to the National Priority List in 1983. U.S. EPA issued a decision for groundwater treatment in 2010. The groundwater remediation systems were constructed and put into service. They still are in our service and will be for many years to come treating that contaminated groundwater. And we don't want to do anything to interfere with WR Grace's fulfillment of its commitments to the U.S. EPA to upgrade the water quality on that superfund site. In August of 2015, the town took the former Grace property by eminent domain. Grace has continuing obligations under orders from the U.S. EPA and Mass DEP. And so the proposed access agreement will allow the company to continue to access the monitoring wells that they installed on the property, and we want to allow them to continue to meet their obligations. This is how the site looks, looked perhaps four weeks or so ago. We've installed 4.5 megawatts of solar power, meeting about 3% of the town's electrical demand for each day, on a daily basis, on the north side. And then in the foreground is the new school bus transportation, storage, repair facility that is expected to be completed around June 1st. So we've put the property to good use. The wells are dotted throughout that property, and the access agreement would allow WR Grace's subcontractors to get to the site and do what they need to do in terms of monitoring those wells. And that's.
Thank you. Mr. Whalen? Questions?
Chris, I assume the other two easement were perpetual easements, and this is a limited easement?
The, this is.
In terms of time?
This will endure for as long as their, it will go away when their obligations to EPA and DEP go away, correct?
So it's going to be limited in time to an event?
Yep.
Other questions? Questions from the audience? Article 34.
Relative to Article 34, you'll see in the warrant, it proposed a possible easement across Water Department land adjacent to land we acquired last December on Balls Hill Road. But we have been discussing with the Concord Land Conservation Trust, the Natural Resources Commission, the Water Commissioners, Public Works Commissioners serving as water commissioners, and that it would not be necessary to grant a permanent easement across the Water Department land that was acquired in 2001, and we would instead develop, hopefully this summer, access through the newly acquired conservation portion of the piece to be sure that CLCT has access to its 47 acres adjacent to the river. Otherwise, they would have been landlocked. So they wanted assurance that there'd be access to their property near the river. We've worked out an arrangement where a pathway will be developed on conservation land, giving immediate access to the CLCT, to the 46 acres they own adjacent to the river. So we don't anticipate this Article 34 would be moved. We do have some slides if you want to see them, but.
We don't. Any questions? Good. Thank you very much, Mr. Whalen.
Thank you.
Next is, we're adding an article to tonight's agenda, which is Article 43, release of residential restriction applications to lot 4A and parcel at Forest Ridge. This was, there are two articles with respect to Forest Ridge. They are both going to be heard tomorrow night at the planning board, but because this has been on the agenda of the special town meeting last year, as a select board article, I thought it was wise to have at least a partial explanation through Article 43. Mr. McBride has agreed to be here with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, Article 43 is a follow-up to Article 42, which I'm not going to talk about tonight. I'll be talking about that tomorrow at the planning board hearing. So it's a pretty technical article that will be moved if and only if Article 42 is passed. So if Article 42 is passed for the land use for the development of Black Birch 2, then there'll be a requirement that the deed restriction that prohibits residential development be released by the town. Now, what is that deed restriction? It's not a zoning restriction. It's a deed restriction that was put on the property by the original developer of Forest Ridge Road at the time he thought he was building an industrial park. So he built, he subdivided the property, and each of the lots had a restriction against being developed for residential property. So he then sold them off to developers over time to build commercial property. Well, the property never really succeeded as a commercial or industrial development for a number of reasons, and so over time, there've been two, currently two residential developments that have been built, Riverbend and Black Birch 1. Both went through the process that we're going to talk about tomorrow night in Article 42, but both also required the town to sign off the release of the residential restriction. Now, why does the town have a right to that? The answer is that the town bought property in the subdivision for the light plant, and in doing so, got an interest in the Forest Ridge development as a whole and an interest in the restriction. So all the other landowners have signed off on the release, and the town has signed off twice, once for Riverbend and once for Black Birch. And so Article 43 asks the town meeting to instruct the Board of Selectmen, again, should Article 42 be passed, to do the mechanics of signing off once again on that deed restriction.
All right. Questions from the board? So again, this follows only if Article 42 is passed at town meeting, right? That's the plan here. And you will explain the changes that have been made to the proposal tomorrow night at that planning board meeting. Is that correct?
That's right.
Any questions? Judy?
Judy Sombra, 402 Border Road. I was looking at your slide here, and maybe I'm misreading Article Number 3, but it looks like Parcel B may be missing from the wording in this article as it is in the town law.
That is correct. So the article as printed only included Parcel A, and as you're aware, Parcel B has been added. So at town meeting, the motion will be amended, or the motion moved will include the language up here that says 4A, Parcel A, and Parcel B.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure it wasn't missed.
Thank you. Other questions? Thanks, Jack. Article 48, tax fairness.
Thank you to the members of the board. I'm Reiner Bukus, 1360 Monument Street, speaking. That better? Thank you for reminding me. I'm Reiner Bukus, 1360 Monument Street, speaking for the Concord Tax Fairness Committee. In Article 48, I move that the town establish a senior means-tested property tax exemption as printed in the warrant, pages 37 and 38, as previously approved by the Massachusetts General Court in that language pursuant to a home rule petition, which was submitted to the Concord Select Board by the Select Board to the state legislature at the request of the 2016 town meeting. So that's the history of it in sort of reverse order. But it also makes a point that while we look at something printed on two pages of the warrant, as much as we may be tempted, we may not wordsmith it. Because if we change so much as a comma, we'll have to go back to the state legislature. What is the effect of this proposal? It says that if you have lived in the town for more than 10 years continuously, and if you're more than 65 years old, and a co-owner, if there is one, is more than 60 years old, and if your owned home, not rented, if your owned home is a value less than the town median assessed value, and that is a number on the order of somewhat less than $900,000, and if your income is less than about $57,000 for a single person or $86,000 for a married couple, then as a goal, your property tax should not exceed 10% of your total income. Now, this is presented by the Concord Tax Fairness Committee. We were appointed by the Select Board, actually, many years ago, the name has changed a couple of times, to address the issue of economic diversity within the town. In Concord, the issue of diversity is something of town character. It matters a lot to people in the town. And we think that, well, what do we have to do? Why do we have to worry about people with limited income? After all, a third of the households in Concord have an income over $200,000 a year. 60% of the households in Concord have an income greater than $100,000 a year. So do we have an issue? Yes, because about 1 in 8 of Concord households has an income of less than $25,000. And that's to say, living on social security. So this, and these are, I would point out, your neighbors and mine. These are people, not other people. These are not people, you know, all in one part of town, including some on Monument Street. So the committee proposed a means- and age-tested property tax exemption, and this is based upon the established Town of Sudbury model. And this has been running in the Town of Sudbury for some years and has recently just been reapproved by the state legislature. The people who fall into the category which corresponds to this tend to be elderly, many greater than 75 years old. Of those greater than 75 years old, 3/4 of them are women living alone. And these are people, how do I put it? These are the folks you want your kids to go to on Halloween. About 200, not all of the people of low income. About 200, not all of the people of low income. In fact, estimates come out with something like as many as 1,000 Concord households run below the federal poverty line level. Very striking number to think of, all right? The income and assets would be reviewed by the Board of Assessors. And the property tax exemption, while it should be always less than 10% of the income, property tax could not be reduced by more than 50% under this. It would help these people stay in town and stay in their homes. It may be argued that, well, the obvious thing for these people to do is just to move into assisted living. Has anybody priced assisted living recently? It makes property tax look pretty inexpensive, all right? At more than $5,000 a month, all right? This would be paid for how? By a Concord tax rate increase capped at 1/2 of 1%. We should keep in mind that we vote regularly in terms of the CPA on the order of 1 and 1/2 percent. So this is substantially smaller than that. The Board of Assessors managed the program, set the standards, and the typical tax bill increase would be about $70. I would point out, that's fully deductible. How would it work? Well, the homeowners apply on a form provided by the assessors. We do not yet have the Concord form that's already been worked through the Board of Assessors, but they're ready and willing to do that. But based upon the models set up by Sudbury, the application includes not only the state's circuit breaker status, but the applicant's tax returns, federal and state. So it really is quite an invasive process that way. The assessors review the applications. They consider the income and any other assets. So the question is, do they have, you know, a villa down on, you know, in Falmouth or something like that? Well, you have to put it all down. And your bank accounts, and your investment funds. When we had this hearing at the State House and somebody said, well, at the current state of bank interest, that, you know, half of 1% or 10 to 1%, if you only had $1,000 in income from that, that could be $1 million in the bank. Well, that's all established by the application process. And within the funds available, property tax could be reduced for these qualified people by up to 50% so that they would not be paying more than 10% of their income. And if it turns out that the amount of money available is less than would be called for by trying to get everybody to the standard, then everybody's help is diminished in proportion. Now, it's worth considering, in this process, that there's really a very important role played by a citizens group, the Board of Assessors. Now, the Board of Assessors have a lot of work to do. They have to process a lot of exemptions, which is tough and emotional for people. It matters a lot to them. Here is something which the Board of Assessors has more work to do. And we need to think very carefully how we do this through process, how we give them time. Potentially, that applications for this would need to be in by about the 1st of August, assuming that this goes through the next step. But the Board of Assessors do set the standard. The Board of Assessors' word is the law under the law here. And there may be times when the Board of Assessors would say to, say, the Select Board, "Tell us, what is, who are the intended recipients?" All right? And as a community, we need to deal with that potentially. So, how do we make it happen? Well, if this town meeting, pardon me, I'm speaking to you as the town meeting. If this town meeting approves this article, then as required by the legislation, the exemption must be affirmed by a town-wide vote. On the assumption that there may be a special election, a special vote required in any case because of other things such as landfills or something like that, that election could happen in June. If it passes the town-wide vote, then assistance could begin as soon as 2018. So the Tax Fairness Committee, acting on behalf of our less-favored elderly neighbors, respectfully requests your positive action on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to your committee. It's a long process to get one of these home rule petitions passed. Questions from the board?
You said that this has been ongoing or working in Sudbury for a number of years. How many years and what's their, how many households have been engaged?
Sudbury has about 120. They now are going, I think, into six years of this. The state legislature approved Sudbury's act on the basis of it's now a forever act for them. Concord's act says that it will expire in three years from its first implementation. So we will need to go back with evidence that this is achieving the goal we had in mind for it within three years of its implementation, which presumably means that we have to go back through the town meeting another two years out to make it continue, if the people in the town feel it's worth continuing. I would also point out that the act provides specifically that if the people in the town don't like it, don't want to do it, then they can vote it out of existence. It's in all the fine print you find on pages 37 and 38.
Mr. Bukez, do you happen to know how much tax savings were offered from two seniors in the Town of Sudbury out of the 120?
Say again?
How much money has been saved for, by the seniors who are in the program in terms of?
Well, I don't have a number for that that's very specific. But, you know, it's interesting to point out that there are many programs which in Concord we implement for the benefit of different subgroups. You know, if, for example, if you're the surviving spouse of somebody who died in combat, we have a 100% exemption. That's not something people will line up to get, but there it is. But a loss of a leg or an arm, or age, or, there are many blindness and so forth. So we have many of these. We try to communicate to the people in the town through the tax bills and so forth, all of the programs. This one is very specific for elderly, very specific for long-term residents, very specific for low income, very specific for housing below the median number. But it also has an amount of money which is rather more than the other programs can provide, because this could provide half of the tax. It could provide several thousand dollars to someone, whereas the other ones are typically $500 and in a few cases, $1,000. So it does draw upon all of us to make this contribution more meaningful.
Good. I know you did, but I think it's important to remind everybody when we get to town meeting that there's nothing new here, that this was begun a while ago, was voted almost unanimously, I think, by town meeting last year. So there hasn't been any change in what the town had approved before.
That's absolutely correct. The language, essential language, was provided both to the FinCom and the town meeting a year ago. It's all printed in the warrant again, so this is not new. It's also not new in the sense of what we presented this town, but it's not new in the case of Sudbury having had years of experience doing this.
Good. Are there questions, Cynthia? Are you, go ahead.
Cynthia Wood, 362 Bedford Street. Can this be combined with all the other exemptions that are already offered by the Board of Assessors? And can it be combined with the provision of being able to do a property tax deferral?
Yes, is the short answer, all right? It doesn't take into account those things. There are some details that may relate to circuit breaker eligibility because your taxes go down some, so other things happen. But the basic answer is yes. It's-
Thank you.
Judy?
Judy Terry, 368 College Road. I just want to know, the assets, is there a way to legally determine an individual's assets other than the property that they own in town?
This may help. But the short answer is probably not. There's no legal way. But this gives you an example. This has not been approved by the Board of Assessors. This is not the document. But this is based on the Sudbury document. People have to put down the information of who they are, do they own their property, how old they are, how many years they've lived there, what is the property owned, all right? Other real estate, personal property, bank accounts, total value of bank accounts, and other securities. People have to put that down, and then they sign it, but they are not signing under penalty of perjury.
They are not.
They are not. But they, on the other hand, they're providing their tax returns, which were in fact signed under penalty of perjury. So I think that the question of whether people will be intentionally misleading, that possibility does exist. But they have to do it on a lot of paper, so.
All right.
I assume they were requiring them to file their tax returns even if they're being audited.
All right, Tom, calm down.
Well, I think I'm not going to go into this issue of filing tax returns.
I'd run for your seat if I were you, Ryan. Are there other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. And that is the extent of the articles we need to review tonight. So we will be adjourned and will reconvene here tomorrow evening for the planning board public hearing. Thank you all very much for coming.